Message from Mr. Sexy Voice. That's what it said on Facebook.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, they were upset they did not get a message from Mr. Sexy Voice.
I have actually seen that same thing.
The actual word on Facebook, Mr. Sexy Voice.
That was like two or three months ago, something very similar.
Jonathan, that's how you say this, Pete. Don't forget. When? I know. He called me on the Sunday night live. Your listening public is very happy that you're here.
Come in.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, April 5th, 2021. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a nice, long weekend, for those of you who had Friday off. At this time, could we have a roll call, please? Skinter?
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
John Noons.
Yep.
Mary Waite.
Here.
Thank you very much. For those of us in attendance this evening, just a reminder to silence your cell phones. Keep those on low, vibrate. And at this time, this is where we typically allow a few minutes for public comment. And just a reminder as well that per Governor Baker's audit suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 38, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via livestream at youtube.com/dhstvmedia. In addition, the event will be rebroadcast on DCTV Channels 9 and 18 on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as is practicable. And as always, a big shout out to Dartmouth Community Television and the folks over there, as well as Mr. Parati and his crew here. That's always so diligent and always coming up with new creative ways to broadcast our school committee meetings. So, thank you very much, Mr. Parati. At this time, this is where we typically allow a few minutes for anyone wishing to comment on any of tonight's agenda items. As always, you can also email those comments, and I know we've received a few of them already, to our recording, secretary Kathleen Skinter at dartmouthschools.org. Besides the ones that you forwarded us, Ms. Skinter, have you received any others?
I have not.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Jenkins, Dr. Jenkins?
So, I just have a question for you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
We received a letter from the Dartmouth High School Public Parking Committee.
Correct.
And I know you said we aren't talking about parking. That's not an agenda item.
Yep.
Some public comments have to be on agenda items. But I don't wonder if that might not be considered under budget, because the parking fee does have budgetary implications. And if we were to make changes to the parking fee, I'm not saying that we are or are not, the budget will be voted most likely enclosed this evening. So, any sort of changes that happen, happen. So, I don't know if we want to at least read that now, because it has budgetary implications. It's up to you, it's your ruling.
Sure, thank you very much, Dr. Jenkins. And I appreciate that. And I know I CC'd you on the email. I think that is something, I appreciate the student's letter, and I think that deserves a little bit of attention, a little more discussion on an agenda item. I don't want to, since we typically do not read public comments aloud during our meetings, I don't want to set a precedence while we're away on Zoom meetings right now or on YouTube meetings. So, I would like to see that come up on one of the next agendas. I do feel, though, that it's worthwhile and worth giving an attention. I understand your role and what you're saying with, under the budget, but I think it's such a minute portion of the budget that, you know, certainly if, there could be some wiggle room if, you know, we choose to just vote on the budget the way it is tonight.
That's fair enough. And I think it's good that we've had this discussion in open meeting about that we're not going to read it tonight, because we're going to put it on the agenda later. So, that's fine. We just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I thought the letter was very well-written by that student, so thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yes.
I did receive information from Mr. Kylie on that. If I could provide a little bit of information about that fee of what it goes, when we get to the budget discussion.
Okay.
We don't have to read the letter, but I can just give a quick overview.
Sure.
And then you can lead on more discussion at a future meeting.
Sure. And for everyone watching at home, we were talking about student parking fees here at Dartmouth High School. You know, we can certainly just...
Just give you a quick synopsis.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I do think that it's worth bringing that student back for another meeting.
Yep.
At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of March 22nd, 2021. So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noons, a second by Mrs. Waite, on the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to our student representative to the school committee. Evan Garcia Mello is here this evening, and I'd like to turn it over to you for an update of what's happening at Dartmouth High School. Good evening, Evan.
Good evening. So, my name is Evan Garcia, and I am a junior at Dartmouth High School, and I am one of the high school student representatives to the school committee. So, I'm here to update you all on this high school's recent activities. So, the robotics team held a virtual competition on March 18th. The team competed in the qualifying round for the first tech challenge, and you can view this at twitch.tv/dhsroboticsclub. AP students are preparing for upcoming exams. The math department has been conducting mock exams in AP Computer Science. Students will complete mock exams later this week. Many other AP teachers are also holding study and review sessions for students as we enter testing season. Unified basketball kicked off their season Thursday with a game against Middleborough, and they will continue tomorrow with a home game against Durfee. Our fall 2 sports season continues to be a success, and signups for spring sports have begun. DHS is offering cheerleading, baseball, softball, tennis, lacrosse, outdoor track and field, unified track and sailing. Signups close on April 14th. The PSAT 10 exam is scheduled for April 15th and April 16th for students who sign up to take that exam. Lastly, Dartmouth High's 21 for 21 campaign kicks off this Friday with Dartmouth's variety show, Dartmouth's Finest. This show features eight of Dartmouth seniors, but only one will be crowned Dartmouth's finest. And you can stream the show live on DHS TV Media's YouTube page. So, that concludes my update, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much, Evan.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, comments?
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to put you on the spot, if that's okay with you.
Yes, that's totally fine.
How do you think things are going so far to date at Dartmouth High School?
I think they're going very good. I know that it's a very strange time with COVID and all, but I feel like I'm definitely still very busy and I'm still very involved in school activities. I know, for example, I'm here tonight, I will have a debate competition Saturday, I have track practice after school every day, except for tomorrow, when I have unified bowling instead.
Okay.
I'll have a track meet Thursday, actually. So, I definitely feel like, you know, it is a very difficult time, but I think everyone, from the teachers to the administrators, to of course you all, I think everyone's just trying very hard to make it all work. And I think it has been pretty successful so far.
So, overall, you feel like it's some kind of, the most normalcy that you can get out of a not-normal year?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, great. And one of the things I'm going to be bringing back during the report of the Chair is, I think it would be great, Dr. Gifford, if maybe in one of our next school committee meetings, may not be the next one, but maybe the following one, of bringing the senior class officers here to kind of share with us what they've done for, you know, the 21 for 21. Yes, Mr. Noons?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we talked about this a while back when Mr. Tebow was here, and we talked about, like, the 21 for 21 coming up, and we talked about having the class officers here in person. And Mr. Tebow, to number one, so we could see them and say hello.
Right, right.
And number two, more importantly, they could kind of give us a synopsis as to what is going on.
That's right.
For year-end and everything else. So, I mean, if we're looking at like May 17th or something, that'd be fine, that'd be great.
Yeah, you know, not next meeting, but you know, in the next month or so.
They'll be winding down at that point, but it would still be nice to have an idea of what's going on.
Yeah, we just, I think from, at least from my perspective, I can only speak for myself, but I think it would be great to have you folks have the senior class officers in here, and, you know, along with the student rep to the committee, just to share everything that's been going on and how much has been going on with planning especially.
Yeah.
So...
And I'm glad you asked about how things were going, because that was something I wanted to know also. And also, after Evan spoke the first meeting, I obviously conversed with Mr. Tebow, and we were both so pleased. He said he was so proud of you, because he always gives the kids some tidbits of what's happening, but he took it upon himself to add a little flair and extra things. So, he was exceptionally proud of the work you did on our first meeting, so thank you, Evan.
I'm really glad to hear that, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for presenting this evening, Evan.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, but we know...
I'm busy, I have homework.
We know you're very busy, you're a busy man. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
And next up, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gifford for her introduction for our spotlight on Joseph DeMello Elementary School.
Yep, so, we're happy to welcome the DeMello School tonight. We have, of course, Principal Katie Poveo, along with Assistant Principal Liz Correa.
Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. Let's get it going, Jonathan. Okay. I don't want that to happen again. Go. Yeah. It's just a minute, yeah. Sorry. All right. Okay, we won't touch it, I promise. Okay. Well, good evening. We'd like to thank you for the opportunity tonight to highlight DeMello School. Given that today was the first day we welcomed back all our students, we had a sneaking suspicion that you might want to hear a little bit about how that went. Therefore, we've...
Can't you just talk a little louder? We've got the vents right behind us, and we can't hear, sorry.
Yes, I will use my teacher voice.
Teacher voice, yeah, thank you.
Oh, use your principal voice.
So, we split our presentation into two parts. We are going to talk a little bit about the work that went into getting us to the point where we were at today, and then we will highlight some specific things that we've been working at DeMello throughout the year with our traditions and just kind of uniquely DeMello. So, that's okay. So, as has been discussed, back in August, we had to submit three plans to the state, including one for all in learning. I would love to sit here and tell you that thanks to that work, when the decision was made to transition to hybrid, all we had to do was open our doors and welcome our students. However, that was just truly not the case. Once we knew that all-in learning was not a realistic option for us in the fall, we shifted our emphasis to creating the safest and most robust hybrid and remote plans possible for our students. And while some of the things we planned for in the fall were applicable to this transition, a lot has changed in the six months from when we theoretically planned for having students in our building to actually having them with us. Guidance was updated, functioning within the confines of the building became a reality, and we learned and adjusted to situations that we just simply have never had to encounter before. So, tonight, we'll give you a peek into some of the work that went into this latest transition and what the day-to-day operations of elementary school look like with all of our students back in school. And while it's Mrs. Correa and I speaking to you tonight, we also know that our colleagues at Quinn, Potter, and Cushman have all done similar work to what we're about to talk about, and that the middle school and high schools are deeply entrenched in this work as they look forward to welcoming more kids back to school. So, one of the biggest changes that needed to be made as we transitioned from hybrid to all-in learning was the use of the spaces within our building. Since September, our students have been eating lunch in their classrooms. With updated guidance and the increased number of students in school, student desks went from a minimum of six feet apart to a minimum of three feet apart. And while we know that this is safe for our students while masked throughout the day, students need to maintain that six-foot minimum when their masks are off and they're eating. So, to make this happen, desks from the high school were brought down to our cafeteria and schedules were adjusted. The domino effect of that, well, at least at Potter and DeMello, was that our teacher's room, which had been in our cafeteria, needed to be moved to the gym, which meant that all PE classes are now held outside or in our classrooms. As someone who goes home to a PE teacher every night, the impact of this decision was certainly not one that was lost on me. We are extremely grateful to Mrs. Schmick, our PE teacher, for her flexibility, and we would appreciate any and all help from the committee and the community in doing the sundance, at least from Monday to Friday from now until June 17th. Our classrooms also went through a shift as more desks were brought in and measured at a minimum of three feet. I know a lot has been said across various platforms about desk acquisition, and we would just like to publicly thank both Mr. Kylie's office and the maintenance staff for assuring that all kids who came to school today had a desk. So, there's been a lot of questions as to why we needed to order so many desks to get to this point, and I'll just reiterate kind of what's been talked about at past meetings, about how over the past several years, we've had a big push towards creating inclusive and cooperative classrooms, and lots of furniture has been purchased to get us to that. But it's furniture that unfortunately, in a pandemic, is unusable. So, it's been a district effort to get all the schools what they need, shifting desks between buildings, ordering additional desks for students. And while there were suggestions that desks should have been purchased earlier, I would just kind of bring attention back to that last slide, when we talked about how every possible space in our buildings is being used for teaching, and being used for learning, and being used, period. And we really, there really was no place to, that was a foolproof, or I guess more accurately waterproof, place to store all these additional desks that might be used. You can just skip right over that. Actually, I guess, that's our custodians who have been moving and moving and moving desks throughout the last few weeks. And our hallways, our hallways are busy travel routes, and they've been marked throughout the year to assist students with appropriate spacing as they walk and line up. One of my favorite quotes that came out of this year came out of our first grade when we were talking to the kids at that point, about six-foot spacing, and one of the kids raised their hand, and he asked, "But is it an adult six feet or a kid's six feet?" Well, six feet is six feet. And we actually had a monitor at the time who was summing for us, who happened to be about six foot two. So, we had him lay on the floor, and we said, "It's a Mr. McCabe's six feet." So, so we do have visuals throughout the building to try to assist the kids on what that looks like and help them line up in a way that is safe. And we've also, our hallways have also become extended learning spaces, as we'll talk about in a few minutes. So, the day-to-day logistics of what happens at an elementary school, we thought you might want to get a little peek at how really every part of our day gets touched and affected by this transition. Getting our kids to and from school is obviously of the utmost importance and needed to be thought through in a way that's both safe and efficient. If you've ever driven down Dartmouth Street a little before 9:00 in the morning or around 3:00 in the afternoon, you might have noticed that we have a lot of students who are picked up and dropped off. We have staff that assure our kids are masked and sanitized before coming into the building in the morning, and we get our kids home safely and quickly as possible in the afternoon. We continue to try to make tweaks to these procedures and make them more timely in nature, but as Mrs. Amaral can probably attest to the reality that the most important quality in a parent who's picking up their children from school these days remains patience. I heard we set a new record today, and our pickup line made it to the library. And as you probably know, transportation guidance was updated, and as a result of that update and the increased number of students in school, we have an increased number of students on our buses. Students are still expected to wear a mask for the duration of the ride and to sanitize their hands as they enter or exit the bus. Procedures have been altered in loading and unloading students to try to minimize the number of kids in the hallway at once. So, typically where the buses would pull up in the morning, they would all sort of open their doors, and the kids would flood through. One bus at a time opens, the kids come in, we kind of hold that. So, there's a little bit of a holding pattern to sort of decrease the number of kids. You see a picture of Mrs. Schmick there with the sanitizers, all our kids sanitized before they head into the building. As we spoke about earlier, the logistics of serving and eating lunch was an area that had to change as we transitioned. At the elementary level, though, students also have a snack and a mask break every day that needed to be addressed. Again, because students take off their masks when they eat, there needs to be a minimum of six-foot distance between students at snack time. When the weather is nice, we encourage our teachers to bring students outside to have their snack in mask break, as most of our teachers are using this time as a read-aloud time, so it's kind of a two-for-one in that. Although, we have an inclement weather plan, because we do know that some days it's rainy. And that involves half of our kids, when we talked about our hallways becoming sort of extended learning spaces, half of our kids kind of go out to the hallway, either with a book or an independent work activity. Half the kids have their snack, and then they switch. Keep going, see. There we go. So, recess. Despite our best sunshine dances, we have days when the weather makes it impossible for us to go outside, and on those days, our recess is still considered a mask break, and therefore, we follow a format that's similar to our snack time, when half the students take an activity and do it in the hall, half of our students stay inside, take off their mask, have a mask break, and then we switch. There we go. So, outdoor recess is an area that we need to look at with student safety in the forefront of our minds. We attempt to keep our kids potted as much as possible, which means that despite being outside, the traditional days of letting them, the kids from all different classes at a grade level play together is just still not a reality for our students. Recession, obviously said, is also considered a mask break, so we need to assure that students have an opportunity to spread apart, take their masks down. So, we've worked with our monitors throughout the year to make sure that this is a process, there is a process in place, and usually, we kind of follow that 5-5, 10-5, 5 format, where there's a few minutes for all the things we need to do. But we also have worked with them on designing structured games, because it is still recess, this is still elementary school, and our goal is to still have kids, have fun, get movement, and get ready to learn for the rest of the day. The only additional thing I'll add to what I've said about mask breaks is what can't be overlooked is teacher creativity. As I walked our building last week, looking over the progress to getting ready for today, I saw lots of different ways that teachers have tried to accommodate their students by getting creative with their spaces. In one of our bigger classrooms, a teacher had X's marked on the floor away from the desks that she had measured at six feet apart, that were designated places for kids to go if they were working independently, that they could pull down their mask, work on their stuff, and still get a mask break. A lot of the classrooms at Potter and DeMello have an alcove between the two joined classrooms. Teachers have designed mask break spaces in there, where students can still be listening to the instruction in the lesson, but have a moment to be able to pull down their masks. And for as strict and sort of sterile as all that might sound, our teachers continue to think outside the box and come up with amazing ways to not only keep our kiddos safe, but keep their learning spaces feeling welcoming and inviting. So, bathrooms. When I said no space could be overlooked, I meant every space, including our bathrooms. So, we had to think of a way to decrease the amount of students in bathrooms to be able to maintain appropriate spacing. So, all of our bathrooms have hooks outside the door, our kids have cards, they hang their card on the hook. Kids have learned that if they have to use the bathroom, they need to make sure that there's a space to hang their hook. If there are two children in the bathroom, they need to wait their turn, and away they go. We discussed classroom design, but I'll just add that in addition to all the things that we've talked about, we continue to run our Univens and our air purifiers in all of our spaces throughout the day. Windows are open where they can be, and we maintain that minimum of three-foot distance. And I put that emphasis on the word minimum, because in the majority of our spaces, our kids are maintaining a distance of greater than three feet. So, we have our, you know, our trusty measuring sticks you saw the custodians with, and they go through and they measure, but by and large, our kids, you can see in that classroom, that classroom is set and ready to go, and those desks are far more than three feet apart. The other thing I'll just say is that with, and I will say this loud and proud, with our custodian's blessings, we have a lot of the classrooms that have marked the floors, because the inevitable movement of six- to 11-year-olds is that desks are not going to stay put where you put them to start the day. So, it's a way for the kids to know kind of how to get back into their appropriate space. And most of what we've talked about tonight really boils down to creating new rituals and routines that needed to be thought about through a new lens. And so much of that work was done in conjunction with our superhero school nurses, including creating a routine for actually seeing the nurse. So, we have traditionally sent our older kids independently, or our younger kids with an adult or a buddy to see the nurse if they don't feel well or they need a little triage. But this year, our nurse makes house calls, so she goes to classrooms to assess students and kind of make a decision about next steps. All of our buildings have had to transition a space to an isolation room, where students who display COVID-like symptoms can be separate from healthy or injured kids who are not. And as you can see, when the nurse is already with a student, and another student is sick, Liz, or in this particular case, I, get to suit up in some good old PPE and go fetch our sick kiddos. I would just, I would be completely remiss if I didn't take a minute to acknowledge that the only way this whole operation is able to function every day is because of the dedication, flexibility, and sheer awesomeness of the people that Liz and I have the privilege of working with every day. Because we have our kids potted throughout the day, we needed a much larger number of individuals who were able to oversee a larger number of smaller groups, if that makes sense. So, we are extremely appreciative to Central Office as they were able to extend our recess monitor and custodian hours to help with this. But the reality is that absences happen, substitutes are at a minimum, and without the commitment of the members of our staff to literally do whatever it takes to get through the day, I'm sometimes not sure we would. This is most often accomplished by our secretary, Katie Goble, whose official title we've petitioned to change to Chaos Coordinator, as she pieces together coverage every morning. As you can see, up there is one of our daily updates, and I think on this day, I was a health teacher, Liz was a librarian, and Katie herself was a lunch and recess monitor. But the names that you'll see on this list most often are those of our teaching assistants. I just cannot overstate what a critical role these people have played in us being able to function on a day-to-day basis. They act as our substitutes, our lunch and recess monitors, coverage for meetings, truly, they do it all, and most times with little or no forewarning. We are so grateful to them and to our entire staff for their flexibility and their willingness to do whatever it takes to be able to give the kids the positive experience, and that's what, I'll say that again, the positive experience that we know that they are getting every day. So, I've talked a lot about the work that went into getting us to this point today, and yes, it was a lot of work, but we would do it again 100 times over, because that's what's led to our kids being in school, and that is why we do what we do, and it makes every single thing that we've done worth it. All of the teachers that I talked to last week, while justifiably anxious about what they called their fourth first day of school, were even more excited to welcome their kids back to school. And our first-grade teachers, who have had their little munchkins back for two weeks now, will tell you that life in what we call Little Land is just as it should be now that the kiddos are back. And while it's wonderful that the adults are excited about having their kids back, it's even better to hear from our kiddos, who are going to tell you a little bit about what they like and are looking forward to about being back. Go ahead.
Hi, Della. Can you tell me what your favorite thing is about everyone being back in first grade?
My favorite thing is art and gym.
Art and gym, seeing your friends every day. All righty, thanks. Hi, Jack. Can you tell me what your favorite part is about everyone being back at school together?
Having fun with everyone.
Having fun with everyone, that's fantastic, thank you. Hi, Lily.
Hi.
Can you tell me what the best part is about having everyone come to school every day?
You can see your friends. If you have trouble with something, you can get help with that, because you're every day.
Yay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Landon. Can you tell me what your favorite part is about everyone being back at school?
I like to do art and gym.
And you get to do those all the time, right, when you're back every day? Awesome. So, Emma, tell us what you're most excited about when it comes to everyone coming back to school on April 5th.
Seeing my friends again, because over the past year or a few months, I haven't got to see as many, because they're in COVID-19. And the fact that I'll be in school every day is kind of exciting, because our teachers don't have to do as much work, and like, they won't freak out, because if they got something on our checklist wrong, even though we do have, will probably have a little bit of homework, but it won't be at heart. And just like... And just like, after the fact that I'll be in school and I'll get to see all my friends in the same classroom is pretty exciting.
I agree. Thank you very much. Sequoia, tell us what you're most excited about when it comes to all students coming back to school in a couple of weeks.
I'm most excited about that, like, we're going to be able to socialize more and that we're going to be able to see more people. And if we're struggling with something, maybe other kids in our classroom could help. And also maybe even the fact that, like, we could help try out another kid in the classroom. And it'll be much more funnier because there'll be more kids and we can meet more people.
Fantastic. Thank you. So Anna, tell me what you're looking forward to in all students who return to school in a couple of weeks.
I think I'm looking forward to how the schedule and how it used to be to kind of get more comfortable with the old schedule again. And I'm also looking forward to seeing more possible friends in my classroom.
Fantastic. I'm excited for you, too. So Maddie, tell us why you're excited about everyone coming back to school on April 5th.
I'm excited for everybody to come back to school because I don't have to worry about using my computer as much and logging onto Meet, doing all my work online.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So I'm not sure if you could hear some of our little guys up at the top, but across the board, one of the things that they talked about was being obviously excited about seeing their friends and kind of having things that they get to do all the time. But I was really, I was kind of struck by the kids' insightfulness that if they are stuck on something or if they need help, that their teacher will be there to kind of help them. And it's wonderful that they still know and view their teachers as that person that they know they can kind of go to if they need help with something. So I'm going to hand it off to Liz, who'll talk you to a little bit about some of the DeMello initiatives that we've been working on throughout the year. Oh, I just overshot the runway for a minute.
So I'm going to be talking to you about keeping and growing our DeMello traditions. And in order to do that, I need to dial back a little bit to last year. So since last March, Mrs. Paveo and I have pretty much been spending many hours making plans for how to run a school in a pandemic. And we knew early on that one of the most important things that we could do for our students and our staff was to keep as many of our DeMello traditions alive as well as we could while maybe cultivating some new ones. So from the onset of the stay-at-home order, we understood the importance of being visibly present in our students' daily lives. That became crystal clear right out the gate when we were home and we needed to connect with our kids. So one of the first things we did at this time was we started to record our daily morning announcements and closing messages that students and families could access through our Facebook page, our DeMello Facebook page. And we immediately started to receive messages from families just to let us know how much they appreciated this simple connection that they had with us. Students looked forward to hearing Mrs. Paveo's daily birthday wishes and words of encouragement. And I received quite a few knock-knock jokes from families to share in each of our day's, each day's closing message. In a very simple way, these videos kept our DeMello community connected in a time when we were physically disconnected. And as we launched this school year remotely and then moved to hybrid learning, we decided to continue to record and send out morning announcements each day, really for a logistical reason. We knew it was kind of slow getting kids in, that teachers needed a little bit more time. In previous years, we used to just have morning announcements at 9:05 exactly every morning. We thought that a big benefit of recording these were to just to have teachers have the ability to sit down with the whole class in press play and enjoy these wonderful morning announcements, which they have, so you're welcome. So as we launched this year, we moved and moved to hybrid learning. We started to record them daily, I should say, Mrs. Paveo did. And during the first weeks of the school year, when we were remote, actually, students were watching them at home remotely. So flash forward to hybrid learning in October. Classes watched these videos together on their in-school days. And the kids who were learning at home on those days could also join in and watch these videos, which we think just kept everyone connected. And now that we are all in together, we will continue to post morning announcements. And as you will see from our video, we have a little clip that we brought along with us today. Mrs. Paveo's daily videos are filled with important information, what's for lunch, what's going on, warmth and a little bit of inspiration to start each day. They've become a new DeMello tradition and they continue to connect us all first thing every single day. So here we go.
And I also pause you at the greatest moment where you look like you're half asleep or sometimes your mouth is half open.
There it is.
There it is.
Good morning, DeMello School, and happy Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd. We don't have any birthdays today at DeMello School, but a happy birthday to anyone that you might know having a birthday today. As we continue with Women's History Month, our quote today comes from famed scientist Marie Curie. Marie Curie was a physicist and chemist. She was the first woman to win the Nobel Prize and the only woman to ever win it twice. And she says, "The first principle: Never let oneself be beaten down by persons or by events." So I love that message, like, I love all our quotes of the day. But this one, friends, think about what that's saying to you. Don't let your spirit be broken by other people or by events. And sometimes that can be really hard to do. So sometimes crummy things happen. Sometimes we have bad days. Sometimes events out of our control are happening. And what she's saying is we can't let ourselves, we can't let our spirit, our positivity, our gratitude be broken by that. So even when you have a tough day, even when you encounter someone that maybe you haven't gotten along with, or maybe they were having a bad day and they tried to dip in your bucket, we can't let ourselves, our spirit, be broken by those things. And that takes perseverance, that takes grit. But remember, friends, we can do hard things at DeMello School. So if you're having a tough day, if the events are happening, or if someone's maybe not being so kind to you, remember Marie Curie's first principle, "Never let yourself, never let your spirit be broken by people or by events." Let's end our announcements today with a spring joke, which hopefully I will deliver correctly. What is a tree's favorite drink? Root beer, of course. I hope that you all have a terrific Tuesday of teaching and learning, and we will see you right back here tomorrow morning.
Such a simple video, and the staff loved them. And the more importantly, I think the kids really loved them. And they think of Mrs. Paveo as someone, as a celebrity because they watched her on the smartboard in the morning and wave and go out of their way to say hello to her in the hallway. She's the lady on the TV. So moving right along, as you may already know, DeMello's PBIS framework is centered on recognizing our students for their positive choices on a regular basis. Again, as we planned for a school year filled with uncertainties, the DeMello staff fully understood that keeping PBIS alive and strong this year was more important than ever. And with a little creative thinking and tweaking, this is what we've done. Each day, teachers continue, as we have in years past, to recognize students who have exemplified our core values of being respectful, responsible, and safe with copying good coins and copying good slips. And I think I can speak for Mrs. Paveo when I say that Fridays are our favorite days at DeMello School. Not because it's necessarily the end of the week, but because it's the one day of the week that we visit every single classroom. We select our leaders of the pack who are pictured here, some of them. We celebrate those children and encourage, invite their classmates to talk about what makes them such a wonderful leader of the pack for their classroom. And it never gets old. The kids truly light up when their names are selected. And at that point, we just dip our hands into a bowl of copying good slips that students have earned in the class and just pick a name randomly. And it is truly the most fulfilling, wonderful, well, one of the most wonderful parts of our week because, as you can see, the kids are just jazzed by the whole experience. And it really, when they get their brag tags, you can see the pride in their face. And like I said, never gets old. And we get to reinforce that, that's what, you know, that's part of what making these good choices is about, is being recognized for the good little humans that you are. Let's keep it going. At DeMello, we also recognize students who consistently demonstrate our core values with a trimesterly Fun Zone, which typically in the past has been, thank you, a 30-minute celebration where students get to engage in various activities. And by all accounts, they enjoy themselves thoroughly. So in the past, we were always able to combine two classes at a time in the cafeteria for the celebration. This year, we had to reimagine our Fun Zones a little bit, given the pandemic. All of our fun has to be socially distanced now. And so for our first Fun Zone, which was back in December, instead of holding 10 celebrations in the cafeteria, we held 40 individual Fun Zones in the classroom. We played a lot of bingo, we did a lot of dance party, kids loved Pictionary, we had a blast. And again, it's all prefaced with "you have earned this." This is a recognition for all of your good choices for making the school the safe, happy place that it is. And 40 Fun Zones flew by. We, really, they did. We had a blast. She's laughing. But there were a lot of them, but they were wonderful. And we are happy to report that the kids, even though it looked different, it felt different from Fun Zones of the past, they really enjoyed it. In this, in these pictures, you can see we had a socially-distanced dance party for these classes. And we're looking forward to our next celebration later on this month. And it'll be a little bit easier because we're all in, so I'll... Onto one of our most cherished DeMello traditions and recognitions, our Student of the Month celebration. So we've been doing in-person Student of the Month assemblies at DeMello School for about four years now. And they're fantastic events that we have in the cafeteria. We don't tell the students that they've been selected as a student of the month. We call families and invite them to sneak in, and then we surprise students of the month when we announce their names and read narratives that their teachers have written about them at the assembly. So again, we had to kind of reimagine this. And this year, we've put together Student of the Month videos. And we've done one every month since we got back just to in-person learning in October. So with the help of our instructional tech coach, Mrs. Vosi, as well as Mr. Parodi and his wonderful interns at Dartmouth High School, we've been able to put these videos together, and they are a true labor of love. They take a bit of organizing. But we've been able to celebrate our students, if not all together in the cafeteria, through a video that teachers show on a drop day that we designate throughout the building. And I would like to show you a special clip.
Hi, DeMello School, and welcome to another virtual Student of the Month assembly. Friends, I've heard that we've come to love watching these assemblies so we can get to see all of the kids from all of the grade levels. So I'm not going to talk very long because I want to get into the real important stuff, which is recognizing some of our friends who are doing amazing things across the day. Friends, I want to acknowledge how difficult this year could be for some of us. Remote learning isn't easy, hybrid learning isn't easy, virtual learning isn't easy. But boys and girls, we can still make great choices and we can still put best effort into what we're doing. And so many of you are doing that every single day. Not just our students of the month, but as we go around and see our copying good slips, we know that so many of you are trying your very best, and for that, we are so unbelievably appreciative. We are so proud of the kiddos that we're about to hear about. We're so proud of so many of you here at DeMello School. But it's our time right now to celebrate 20 amazing kids who are doing great things every day. So let's get ready to roll. Mrs. Kolbeck has this to say about her Student of the Month. It is with great pleasure that I nominate May Amrell as our December Student of the Month. May is a wonderful young lady who is a joy to have in class. Her laugh is contagious and filled with happiness. She exhibits our core values and can be counted on always to be respectful, responsible, and safe. She is kind and is an extremely hard worker. Her work is always done to the very best of her ability, and she can always be found applying all that she has learned. She perseveres and is an incredible role model. She is humble and kind. Her ability to understand a situation and move to the greater good is awe-inspiring. She's very insightful and thoughtful. In addition to all of her accomplishments, she is very safe. May understands what is needed to be safe in our classroom and puts her part into play. In addition, she cares for her things and her technology. We are so very lucky to have May as part of our classroom family this year. This nomination is so well-deserved. Congratulations on being our December Student of the Month. Bravo.
Congratulations, May. Go kiss. Go, May, a kiss.
Hi, May. Congratulations to you. I'm really not surprised because you are really a great kid. But I am so proud of you. Have a great day.
Hi, May. Congratulations on your Student of the Month. You really deserve it. I'm proud of all your accomplishments. Keep up the great work. I love you.
Congratulations, sweetheart. You always make me proud. Good job.
We truly, truly enjoy those videos. And I think when we were thinking of reimagining Student of the Month for this year, we were thinking, let's have families submit videos. It is our favorite, favorite part, the videos, the grandparents, the siblings. I watch them all and put them into Google folders as they come in. And I will literally call Mrs. Paveo and say, I've just seen the most heartfelt, proud parents, like, warm congratulatory messages from families. It really is something. So I feel like we haven't lost anything by moving it to a video this year. And I will look forward to the day when we get back to doing it in person. But these videos are a huge hit with the students and the families. And I just feel like it's such a positive thing to look forward to every month, and everyone does.
Yeah.
So as you can see, we've worked really hard on keeping our community positive, happy, and strong at DeMello School this year despite all the challenges. DeMello School continues to be a place of joy and a place where we all come together. It's a home away from home for everyone every day. So I'm going to turn this back to Mrs. Paveo, who'll talk about the work we've done this year around literacy.
So one of our favorite things to do at DeMello School is to celebrate reading. And with the hard work of Mrs. Coria and Dr. Lisa Macioni, we were able to modify but keep some of our favorite reading celebrations. One such celebration is breakfast blankets and books, which is a mouthful, but also where students bring a breakfast snack, a blanket, and they spread out around the room. And we spend some quality time with a book. We just drop everything and read for a little bit. And these are some pictures of our kids. Typically, we would get a whole grade level together in a shared space. But again, we sort of thought outside the box. The kids built tents and boards around their desks, and they just had a great time reading. Another tradition that we kept this year was our bookmark contest. Students in all grade levels submit a reading-themed design, which is voted on. And then the winning bookmark is distributed to all the students at that grade level. And we have a quick little video from our winners this year.
Go.
Hi, I'm Nora Perry, and I love reading because every story has like, a new story in it. Like, it has, like, characters, and there's all, like, new adventures.
That's perfect.
That's why I love reading.
Thank you. Go.
Hi, my name is Max Beatty, and I love reading because it challenges.
Go.
Hi, my name is Emma Kosty, and I'm in third grade. I love reading because you learn interesting things and you have adventures in books.
Hi, my name is Elliot Spocky. I'm from Mrs. Baker's fourth grade. And I like, and this is my bookmark. I really like reading because it can, it can be really inspiring sometimes. And some of the stories can actually help you solve real-life problems. And also, I can incorporate some words, I can learn some new words from reading. And I really love reading for that reason.
I'm Shion King, and I love reading books because it teaches lots of stuffs.
So Bingo for Books is another beloved family event that we've held at DeMello for the past several years. And obviously, this year, we couldn't do that as an in-person event. So with the help of our ICS, Liz Vosi, and our bingo caller extraordinaire, Melissa Pickering. If you've never heard Melissa run a bingo, you've missed out. We were able to turn this into a Google Meet virtual family night. And this just kind of encapsulates what we're talking about. We had to take these things that we knew our families and our kids love and just amend them and tweak them so that we could still do them. They could still be done, they're just not quite done the way that we've done them before. But I think we've found new and really wonderful ways to connect with our families. This was, this event was just a couple of weeks ago. It was hysterical, actually, to see the kids also in their home environments playing bingo. It was great. And in celebration of Read Across America in the month of March, we have traditionally looked forward to inviting guest readers into DeMello to read to our students. Again, not wanting to... Again, not wanting to let that go, we worked with our readers that Mrs. Coria was able to corral into reading, and most of you in this room tonight helped us make that happen. Guest readers were all able to read books from our diversity library, which Liz is going to talk about more in just a couple of minutes. And finally, one of the coolest things, I think, that we've done over the past couple of years is invite authors to D'Amelio School to talk to the students about their process of writing, editing, and publishing their writing. This year was no exception, and we were thrilled to welcome Scott Magoon, Sadiya Faruki, Julie Berry, Josh Funk, and Jarrett Lerner virtually into our classrooms to discuss their books and careers as authors. I think it's so empowering to our kids to be able to see people who have made a career out of writing. I think a lot of them view writing as this thing that we make them do, and they don't really see the purpose of it, and they don't think that they could see themselves as someone who could take that into something that they could do as a career and as a living. So, you know, pulling these authors in, and we've purchased the books for our classrooms so the kids can have those books. And then we're actually working with one of our authors to hopefully do a book walk. He's going to give us some copyright rights to be able to blow his book up and post it outside and do kind of a gallery walkthrough. So working with these authors has been amazing and just a really, really wonderful and enriching and empowering event for our students. I'm going to turn it back to Liz, who's going to wrap it up by talking about some of our diversity and inclusion initiatives.
So again, winding the clock back to last spring, as we looked ahead to planning for the 2021 school year, Mrs. Poveo and I set a goal around something of critical importance to the both of us, increasing an awareness and nurturing and appreciation of diversity and inclusion throughout D'Amelio School. In keeping with Rudine Sim Bishop's work on transforming schools into places where children have access to mirrors and windows, we committed to making D'Amelio a place where students could see themselves, their cultures, and identities reflected in the stories they read (mirrors), while at the same time have access to resources that offered them a clear view into others' experiences (windows). While COVID has prevented us from hosting the in-person cultural events we'd hoped to offer this year, we've been able to bring virtual cultural experiences to our students. Last December, author Sadiya Faruki visited virtually our first and second graders in class and at home to discuss her work in her Meet Yasmin book series about a Pakistani-American second grader and her family. Oops. Oh, wait a minute.
I don't know.
I don't know. I might need some technical assistance here. Mr. Galishaw?
No.
Oh, we had a clip of Sadiya Faruki. I'm not seeing it.
Good morning, first and second graders. Thank you for those of you who are tuning in from the classroom, and thank you to those of you who are tuning in at home. We are so lucky to have Sadiya Faruki here with us today. As you know, she is the author of Meet Yasmin and some other wonderful books. So I am not going to talk too long because I want her to have as much time to talk as possible. But the classroom teachers, those of you here in school, when Sadiya is finished talking and it's time for questions, I can go around and mute different classroom teachers, and you can have the opportunity to ask her a question. So I will turn, and of course, you can use the chat, too. So I will turn it over to Sadiya.
Hello. Good morning. I'm Sadiya Faruki. I am the author, like Lisa said, of the Yasmin series, but also other books for kids. I wanted to introduce myself, and then I'll take lots of questions. So I live in Houston, Texas, which is kind of far and probably less cold, way less cold than you guys where you are. But you know, I wasn't born here. I was actually born in another country. I'm an immigrant, which means I was born somewhere else, and now I live here. I was born in Pakistan, which is, if you don't know, you can look it up, ask your parents or teachers to help you. It is a small country in Asia. It's neighbors with more popular or well-known countries like China and India, and that's where I was born. I grew up there. I went to school there, and I went to college there. And then when I was a grown-up, I was 22-years-old, not very grown-up, but you know, adult, that's when I got on a plane, and I flew all the way to the United States.
We wanted to know if you have a favorite book?
You mean in my books?
Yes, from your book series that we've been reading. Did you have a favorite one?
That's hard. Am I allowed to have favorites? I feel like I shouldn't have favorites because I wrote all of them. That's like asking your mom who's their favorite kid. Ah, don't do that.
And this past February, we received a grant through the Mass Cultural Council STAD's residency program to fund an artist residency at D'Amelio School this year. This has allowed us to bring Japanese storyteller musician and visual artist Motoko to our entire third grade to work virtually with our third graders on learning grade-level math and science concepts through the art of origami. And there she was launching the program last week. And finally, through a generous grant from the Dartmouth Education Foundation last spring, we've been able to create a D'Amelio School Diversity and Inclusion Library for our staff and students. This library currently houses more than 70 student-friendly picture books devoted to a range of topics, including race, poverty, religion, family diversity, and LGBTQ issues. Our guest readers all month, parents and Dartmouth staff alike, all read books selected from this library, and we have enjoyed it immensely. We hope to add to it more and more as we move on.
So we'd like to thank you all for this opportunity tonight to take a look at our road to getting students back in and a chance to shine a light on some of the things that we've been working on at D'Amelio. When we knew we were presenting today instead of on the 26th, we sort of added that piece in, so I appreciate your patience, as this was way longer than we would have ever spoken otherwise. But we wanted to kind of give you that view, and we'll happily kind of take any questions that you have for us now.
Thank you so much, ladies. What a wonderful presentation. It was very encompassing of everything, and I have a couple of my own thoughts, but I'm going to turn it over. We can start down there with Mrs. Waite.
Hi. So, you know, I just love D'Amelio, and I think you have such a fabulous, amazing staff. And, you know, certainly, seeing all of this is testimony to that. So it's very comprehensive. You know, it's everything I expected and know that would be happening. You know, I love seeing that these traditions that I know were so beautiful for our family to go through are still being, you know, recast this year. But, and it's such a great lesson for the kids, too, to say, you know, we have to do something differently, but we can still do it. That's such awesome modeling, and it's so, I think it's empowering for them just to see how this year can play out in a positive way. We can make the best out of what's a really tough, you know, reality for everyone, you know? And just again, and I think, like, I love seeing, you know, Mrs. Poveo just talking about that, like honestly, in these like conversations that, you know, we can, it's hard sometimes as we, you know, interpret this quote, you know, there is like from Marie Curie that it's hard, and really bringing that to their level and explaining that, and then launching the day with, you know, we understand and what we're going to move forward and be inspired. So again, these are real, you know, so many things that are happening and are so meaningful. And I, you know, I look at the video and I think, wow, you know, I want to go back and watch, I want to watch you every day. And I want to watch, and the family stories.
I can forward them to you.
But the family stories, too. I thought that was, I mean, you know, May, but that was a beautiful, you know, so important for those kids and those families. I want to sit back down and watch all the Students of the Month because again, and I, I'm sure that's a great treasure for, you know, everyone, especially people that, you know, even in normal situations, couldn't be there to be part of that ceremony. So there are some, you know, again, some, I think, positive legacies that will, you know, continue to come from this
For sure.
tough time.
For sure.
And again, and I really appreciate the Mirrors and Windows program, and I was, I felt, you know, I loved the book that I read, and, you know, I felt that, you know, again, just for these kids to be able to walk in and see like, wait, that's a book about me and something that I can identify with. And, you know, I, that is, you know, it's all about that self-image and that positivity. And, you know, again, it's just another, everything that you guys do right and your staff does. And so thank you, and thanks especially to your, you know, TAs and your nurses, you know, your nurse, and just everything that, you know, I know Sharon's been, I just, everybody coming together, it's a phenomenal job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck for the rest of the year.
Thank you.
Mr. News?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies, thank you very much for being here. I know I took a, fortunate enough, Mrs. Poveo gave me the tour before school opened and got a chance to see what was going on when they were moving things in August to get the six feet, and, you know, the gym down in the back had all the excess furniture at the time, and, you know, what are you going to do for June? I don't know. Haven't gotten there yet, you know? You know, pray for warm weather type of deal, but thank you. You know, you, Mary, just, Mrs. Waite just talked about, you know, sayings and everything else, and I was sitting here going, yep, life gives you lemons, you make lemonade. So you've done a fantastic job, and just a personal thank you for allowing me to pop into Mr. Finnclack's room that Wednesday to read the book. It was a great book on, you know, 20 different Americans with cultural diversities and such, and some of them, you know, being a child of the 60s, I can remember a lot of those that were going on. So it was really to put my own little spin on some of them, and, you know, I hope the students enjoyed it. I did, and I thank you. And don't hesitate to send me a text or an email again. I'd love to do it again.
We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. News. Mrs. Amaro?
Thank you for being here. I, just this weekend, actually, came across a pile of paperwork, like, you know, it was actually a small pile, proud to say, that I just, I guess I haven't gone through. And it was a folder, and I don't know, maybe I knew what was coming, I just was avoiding it. But it was actually the Friday afternoon reading log for Mrs. Baker's fourth-grade class and, you know, a flyer dated March 13th. And May and I looked at it like, ooh, and there was a YMCA catalog for a spring event, and she, she's a little bit of a comedian, and not to make light of a serious situation, she said, well, that camp didn't happen. And yeah, so she just kind of rolled with it. But that was something to see, just to say, oh my goodness, this has been in this little pile here for a very long time, and we've been at this for a very long time. Yep, I am also one of the parent pickup parents. I, I don't know, I've been fortunate to be able to drop off and pick up all three of my kids, even when they were in three different schools for three different reasons, three different ages. And it's been notable, the change, because you also probably see us there early, because my daughter likes to be there early. It's part of her starting her day, and she wants to be prepared, even with assigned seating. So we engage her. She's earlier when Papa brings her, but she's still early-ish when Mom brings her. I don't know, jury's out on Dad. No, I'm just kidding. But we arrive, you know, early, and wow, even last week, we talked about the first, the youngest kiddos coming in, and we were like two minutes past our schedule, and we were out to the street already, dropping off. I thought, oh my goodness, this is going to be really tough when, you know, she starts on the fifth full-time. And, but we were, we were very early this morning. Embarrassed to say how early we were this morning, but I will say, I think we were there about quarter past eight, and we were the third car. We weren't the first car. We were the third car in line, which is, so that's striking. I'm sure it got quite chaotic, but you always handle it, everyone that is very organized and handle it with just patience and positive attitudes all the time. Sometimes have to wake people up to have them move along, but the process that you put in place is very simple, and, you know, we have a name tag, so nobody has to go social distancing, where they can call the name, and everybody's prepared to come out in line. And then it's just like a seamless process, so really kudos to you. And I don't, I miss all of your staff. We personally, the last couple of years, were able to experience like Ms. Baker, and this year, we have Ms. Kolbeck. And just both scenarios, and I'll just reference like this year, knowing, just knowing what makes, you know, the teachers must have been feeling and just, like, the sense of repeating yourself every other day and double time and extra work and just not, you know, stuck in the mud, unable to kind of really take time to straighten yourself out and, you know, the positivity, the grace, the excitement, the energy, the obvious love to be there to do what she can to make those kids at home feel welcome and supported and to start their day with energy. Like you said, those on-and-off days and starting back when the pandemic started, we would all tune in to listen to you and to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and at the end of the day, and then to listen to the jokes. And then what you did, you just made me choke up a little with the Student of the Month, but the ways in which you constantly, you know, were trying to make things as normal as possible, that's so, it was so special. And then to be able to, to be able to have, like, my dad, you know, record, Papa record, that's her favorite person in the world, and then to have Liam there. Now, he normally would have been at school. We wouldn't have wanted him to take the day off to come to something to celebrate like that, or he, he might not have wanted to stay there, you know, wouldn't have been the best situation, let's just say. Especially knowing that the cafeteria we usually hold is where his oldest sister used to play basketball, so all bets are off with that. But he was able to be part of that video. I don't know what she looked like when she watched it in person because she was totally surprised, but I'm sure she was, she was quite overwhelmed with emotion because it's really, her family's really important to her. So just, I want to thank you for everything you've done. Happy to be back. May admittedly announced today that she, in a happy, she was thrilled to see her friends. She told me who she saw. They didn't say hi to each other, but they waved. She was happy. There was music, classical music at lunch in the cafeteria, and you played, there was a game, I think. I forget.
We played a little Would You Rather.
Yeah, there's some games that, you know, so she had a blast, but she was nervous. She said she was a little bit nervous, but she was okay, like she, but I'm really glad that she is able to articulate that to me, and she trusts that she, she says what she wants to say when she feels she needs to say it. And so, you know, I'm sure kiddos were nervous. I'm sure teachers were nervous. I was a little nervous. She came home, she put more hand sanitizer on right away. She's really diligent. But the work that you've done in making kids feel as safe as possible and has been tremendous, so I just appreciate it. I'm really thrilled. I love all of our schools, and, but I'm grateful that she gets to be with you and experience this through the, you know, through the umbrella of your little family school. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaro. Dr. Jenkins?
I just want to echo my colleagues in saying thank you for the presentation. I think it was particularly useful because I think we see a lot of times on social media, well, why didn't they already have a plan? And I don't think people understand that, and I think it's really important to reiterate, right? The first plan you developed was for six feet, right? And then we waited, and then we waited, and then we waited, and then the state was like, oh, and then, you know, less than a week, you got it. I don't know, I'm exaggerating, but now it's three feet. And so part of the thing is, is that it was impossible to plan for all possible scenarios that might have been coming from the state about how we were going to have to do that. So showing all the work that went into figuring out, once we got the guidance, is really helpful, I think, for people to understand how much work so many people did to make this happen in such a short time. I'm super appreciative of both you showing us that work because I think it illustrates to our community what was done. It's not like people were, you know, sitting at home, like, my friend used to joke, I'm going to work from home, I'm going to eat Cheetos and watch soap operas all day. That's not what's happening. People are working around the clock to make this happen. And so I appreciate you showing that to us, but also the work that really went into bringing our kids back to school. So thank you. And I'm sorry I forgot your book. I promise I will bring it back. I had a great time reading it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Yeah, there's not a lot more that I can say. You know, just a few things. Really, ladies, phenomenal presentation. I thought it was really well-done, really well-put together. There was a lot of thought and effort, and the fact that you were able to take away, take some snippets out of, you know, the day and share with us some of the students' comments, I thought that was huge. So to me, this video really highlights, kind of like what Dr. Jenkins was saying, the culmination of hundreds and hundreds of hours of planning of, you know, to get kids get kids fully back, get students fully back in school. And that's really what this video did. It was the call, it highlighted the culmination, it was the culmination of how and why you did what you did in order to get our, our students back in school. So, you know, just a couple of little notes that I, I jotted down that I thought were important, you know, keeping the traditions alive, I thought that was huge, how you used to do bingo, now you turned it, and I thought that was awesome, I, I'd love to be a virtual bingo caller. Sounds like a fun gig.
You're careful what you ask for.
I know, right? Continuing to, um, you know, go after tho, those grants through the Mass Cultural Council, through the Dartmouth Education Foundation, um, huge. Uh, and then bringing the authors in, um, I love the morning pep talks, pep talks, um, you know, I was, I was actually getting a little, uh...
A few of my, a few of my teachers, they're gonna get me a little red cardigan, and they joked that I'm like Mr. Rogers of Jamella School. I thought it's kind of a compliment to me, so I'll take that.
No, um, and just, I think you said, you know, the nurses making the house calls, the, you know, to the rooms, there's just so many moving parts. And, um, so, you know, hats off to you and your staff for a job well-done.
Thank you. They really, I, I have to say thank you, but they, you know, Liz and I always say that our job is to sort of lift the barriers so that the teachers can do the important work. So, like, yes, this is, as I said, like, this is a lot of work, and this is what we do, but we do it so that the teachers can get in there and teach the kids. And they really are the superstars of this whole operation, because we can, we can move all the barriers, we can do whatever we want, but we need the people to get in there and do the important work of working with our kids every day. And we're just eternally, eternally grateful, and it can't be said enough how amazing our staff has been through this whole thing. So, thank you for that, um, but I'm just gonna trickle it right down to the people who are, who are doing that hard work every single day.
No, I agree. I, I couldn't agree with you more, and that goes back to what you had showed us on the, uh, the morning, I don't know if it was called the morning call sheet, or whatever it was, with, uh, with all the different substitutions that need to be made.
Yes, actually, and what I failed to point out in that picture is, at one point you saw our custodian, um, we have a virtual class where our teacher from Quinn comes in, we have an extra, uh, fifth, fourth grade. So our custodian, at one point, I got called out into a meeting, and I literally saw him in the hallway, and I said, I need you for five minutes. And he said, what do I have to do? I said, nothing, the teacher is on the smartboard, I just need you here in case anything happens. So it is a literal all hands on deck, and I, we are just eternally appreciative of everyone's hard work.
Teamwork.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, ladies, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, next up, under old business, continuation of the FY22 budget discussion, and, um, looking to be, uh, to be taking a vote this evening. Um, we'll start off, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Gifford for any updates, or anything that you want to share with the committee before we continue.
Yep, sure, thank you. So, uh, once again, I'll just, uh, share with you, um, some information Mr. Kylie provided, uh, relative to the letter that we received about the parking, just, just so you have it in the back of your head. So we've had that, uh, come forth before, a number of years ago, and just for your information, um, the committee did reduce the fee one hu, from $100 to $60, and he said that was about eight years ago, so the parking fee right now is $60. And it pays for plowing, the painting of lines, lighting, repairs, maintenance of lots, and any little paving that has to happen. Um, and as we know, or don't know, but I'll make, make you know, that the maintenance staff, our maintenance staff, plows the lots ourselves, so, in most of the snowstorms, and we have contracted out in the past if need be. Um, so, obviously, you all set the fee, and, um, again, for future discussion, if that was, I know it's pretty slim pickings in that, um, little pot of money, and it is used every year, and if that were to be eliminated, um, that would be something that we would have to add to the operating budget. So, just a quick update from Mr. Kylie on that. And that's all the updates, nothing else has changed?
Can you, do you know what the total amount of revenue is generated from the parking fee?
I don't, no, I don't, I don't have that, yep. It's not a whole lot, but...
Okay.
But it's $60 reduced.
Sixty, yeah. Just as an FYI.
Three hundred ballpark, max.
And other than that, nothing else has changed.
Right.
Yeah, because not, yeah, because...
Eighteen thousand, max.
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 Yeah. Luckily, we do have the maintenance crew doing most of the snowstorms, so, you know, if we had to contract that out all the time, that would be terrible, yeah.
It's the town of pitching too.
Yep.
No, so, thank you, Dr. Gifford.
And you do have the, um...
Yeah.
Uh, the motions.
The motions that Mr. Kylie provided.
Want the motions, Mr. Chairman?
Um, yeah, so does anyone have any other comments or questions about tonight? Uh, Dr. Jenkins?
Uh, so, Mr. Chair, prior to approval of the budget, I would like to make a motion, um, to amend the budget, to adjust the administrative budget, um, to leave the current administrative structure that we have in place for the next fiscal year, leaving the assistant superintendent position vacant, um, and keeping their director of teaching and learning.
I'll second that.
So, I have a motion by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Mrs. Wade, to, and could you repeat the, what you asked for?
Uh, to retain the current administrative structure and the administrative, the district office, to not fill the vacant assistant superintendent position, and to retain the current director of teaching and learning position.
Okay, thank you very much. So I have a motion by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Mrs. Wade. On the motion and discussion, Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm sorry I can't support that, I think we need the assistant superintendent's position. Okay, with everything that goes on, everything that is needed, uh, in this system, not only our system, but every system, type of deal, I think you need an assistant superintendent, an assistant superintendent that's gonna handle, you know, the other things that the superintendent and the, uh, assistant superintendent of business and finance, you know, the in-between things, type of deal. Uh, to take that position out of the budget, uh, I think is wrong, and, uh, I think we need to, you know, leave it there, uh, as a failsafe. So, I mean, I'm, I am fortunate, I will not support this motion.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Amaral?
I, I would support this, because I've, I've been kind of mulling around in my head about this, um, because we, I, I know everyone's taking on so much extra, but I was under the impression prior to, like, the budget proposal, that we had sort of voted, I don't remember what that vote was, but to, like, revisit this, kind of post, kind of where, when we're back in, um, and I just, I just feel that, you know, Tracy, you know, the curriculum piece is so important, uh, I just would, I just feel like, although I know people are taking on more than they typically would to make this happen, I just am back to where we were that time when we voted that we would revisit this, like, next year or something. So, I mean, I would support this, not to say that this is a forever thing, but I, I, um, so anyway, that, I, I do feel that, that it's been, it's not sitting well with me in, in, in that, just not now, kind of thing. I just, I don't know, I don't know, so, I know that sounds like very convoluted, but that's my, my thoughts around it, um, I don't know.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just say that I kind of echo what, um, Mrs. Amaral said, that I had thought that we had voted on this, and then, you know, it would come to an agreement, and it was, you know, and certainly it seemed that we were gonna hold on this, you know, whether or not that it was an official vote, but it seemed like we were, you know, that seemed to be, while it wasn't unanimous, like a consensus that we were gonna hold, um, and so I was just, I've been struggling a little bit with it as well, on that, on that note.
So, Dr. Jenkins, are you saying to leave the, just leave the position vacant at this time?
To retain the current administrative structure, which is to have that position vacant, and to have a current director of teaching and learning.
Okay.
So, just to clarify, you, you said at the last time that you would take it up during budget, not to vote for next year. That's what you discussed. So this budget process, and as you know, that by leaving it vacant, it is a hundred, about $140,000 that we've reduced, um, so we were asking for a simple, about an $8,000 increase to the current director of teaching and learning salary, to take on all those additional, um, responsibilities that I gave you in that updated job description. So with that said, then I would have to cut that job description about in half, um, so I'm not quite sure what all the rest of, what you would propose, all of those other responsibilities, because my, my, my day is pretty much in Mr. Kylie's right now, and, you know, as you know, he's out right now, so...
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Olivera took on a lot over the next few days, including DEA negotiations, um, unfair labor practice, uh, discussion that we have to have all day Wednesday, those are things that an assistant superintendent, uh, the title has to go with those responsibilities, to be able to make decisions, um, be on certain committees, et cetera. So, those are kind of the things that we are, um, asking for.
Yeah, I guess my question, Dr. Gifford, would be, how, how has the functionality been this, to date, uh, through this year? Um, right now, how are you operating?
With everybody picking, picking all of that up, but I think with the hope, for the person that's been picking up the most of it with, that this would take place, so I can't guarantee that, that, that takes place continuing, you know?
Sure. Dr. Jenkins?
So, I understand, um, that there's a desire to make this happen, um, you know, I look at my own institution, I'm currently doing the job of two people, right? We have not been able to replace, um, budget times are uncertain and lean, I'm, I'm not convinced at this point in time that this is the time to make this change, right? Um, we still have to have all hands on deck. Second, um, I'm not entirely convinced, I would like to see an analysis of the administrative structures in other districts, that I feel like, um, over the past few, you know, time that I've been on the committee, and that I've been watching this committee from the finance, um, we have limited funds, and we have lots of other needs, and I know we're eliminating a position, but I don't want, I want us to do an analysis of what our needs are, and I want a clear sort of comparison to other districts before I feel comfortable approving this. This is not a never for me, this is a not now. Um, you know, the third thing that I will say is that the assistant superintendent is a very important role in our district. Um, I think that we should be posting such a position, I really do. This is nothing against the current occupant of the position of the director of teaching and learning, but for a position of sort of that scope, um, I believe we should search. That's, that's my position, um, I, you know, not everyone has to agree with me, but I just don't feel comfortable approving this, because once we move forward, it's hard to move back.
I don't know of many districts that don't have an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning. If that's our, our primary goal, teaching and learning, we don't have one now. And also, um, from my perspective, having worked in this, you know, leading the district for the last six years, there is no one better than Tracy Olivera, who has done the curriculum work, the professional development work, and leading all the committees. So, again, we don't agree with that, but that's my, my opinion, my perspective right now.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, uh, just to go to, uh, Dr. Jenkins about posting and that type of deal. In my tenure here, there have been a couple of times that we have posted for assistant superintendents, because we had no one qualified in-house, type of deal. But there have also been other times that we've either done it strictly in-house, or we've just, you know, the position has been available and we've moved someone in. So, I mean, it's not, it's a superintendent, it's the superintendent's call, it's not as to who she, he or she would like to have in that position, type of deal, so I don't see a reason to, you know, spend money, you're talking about trying to save some money with budgets and everything else, to spend money and do a search. It, it doesn't make sense.
I would just, I, I'm, I'm kind of torn, Mr. Nunes, I can understand where you're coming from, I certainly understand where Dr. Jenkins is coming from, um, but I am somewhat concerned at the, the optics when positions aren't posted. Um, and I, I don't want to go backwards in time, but, you know, with other positions, but when other positions were not posted, and just appointments were made, uh, you know, I, I don't really want to go there, but you know, I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think we need to really take a hard look, like Dr. Jenkins said, um, at the administrative structure, I think that's the right thing to do. Um, leave the position vacant, and go from there. Any other discussion?
Now, how, so we, we have a motion, we have a second, we had discussion, but how, how do we move forward then? Do we, in terms of...
It's after we move on the motion, we have that discussion.
Okay.
Right now, we're talking, we're debating the motion on the table.
All right. So...
Mr. Nunes?
Let me, let me, no, never mind, because we'll just vote this, and then it'll just be vacant.
Okay.
I was just trying to figure out the money portion of it, but we'll, we'll vote this and fix it later.
So on the motion, on, on Dr. Jenkins' motion to retain the current administrative structure, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me.
One, no abstentions. Motion passes with four, one against. No abstentions. Uh, next up is the discussion, or the vote for the FY22 budget.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the FY22 budget appropriation for Potter school classroom teachers in the amount of $1,784,314.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Dr. Jenkins, to approve the FY22 budget appropriation for Potter cla, Potter school classroom teachers. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, I will abstain. Motion passes four to zero with one abstention.
So, the question now becomes, now the issue is at hand, that Kathleen was bringing up, to how do we move forward? Um, we could make a motion, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nunes, to approve the budget as-is?
Yeah.
Right, with the total, and then that would just, any of the savings would be left over if Dr. Gifford needs to pay stipends to...
Or whatever, wherever.
Do some duties, that money would be available, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year '22 budget appropriation as amended for the total budget, excluding those items voted individually in the previous motion, in the amount of $45,396,234.44.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Mrs. Amaral, to approve the FY22 budget appropriation for the total budget.
As amended.
As amended. Discussion? Mr. Nunes, did you have something, or?
Nope.
No?
I won't be voting for this.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me.
One, no abstentions. Motion passes, four in favor, one against, no abstentions.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, next up is the superintendent's update.
I really don't have too much tonight, um, one thing I want to mention is the summer reading program that will continue on, and one thing that parents will be able to look for is, um, uh, I think the letter went out, I'm not quite sure yet, but, um, there'll be a summer reading website that people will be able to have resources, um, and also that we'll be sending books home as usual. We did, I think I mentioned it before, we had received a grant to have a STEM vacation camp, uh, st, excuse me, STEM vacation camp, um, we have not been able to really get any teachers, we've posted it twice, um, so...
I think everyone wants a summer off after this year, yeah.
I think so too, so we've been trying to give the money back to Desi, and they won't take it at this point, so we found out today that we can probably use it for any of our summer programs, so hopefully we can attribute that to some of the ESY, um, program that we have planned, but I, I kind of get it, that people don't really want to work anymore.
So, follow that, Dr. Gifford, are you posting that? So for that, Dr. Gifford, are you posting that? Can we post externally, or are you posting externally, or is it just for internal?
It was internal. It was a quick week and it was just, you know, vacation STEM camp. But I understand that people are tired and probably just want a good break.
Right.
So, but at least we can use the money because they said they can't take it back, which is kind of funny. But we'll put it towards the ESY programs. And other than that, just once again, I want to thank Rick Ferrera and all the folks that helped him out over the Good Friday, Saturday, the principals as well, to get the desks put together, assembled in the classrooms, ready to go. From my understanding, I was over at the middle school today. And also had a discussion with Rick Ferrera again, more, like, I don't know, like 600 desks came in today. So they'll be getting those ready, so that we'll have the middle school ready. Just so you know, also, that involves moving things that were brought to the elementary schools back to some of the other schools as we are starting to use tables with plexiglass, et cetera. So they're making it work, but we will be ready to go with the middle school and high school whenever. We don't know the date on the high school, but we're working towards, I mean, it doesn't mean we have to wait for that exact date, but we're working towards having things ready. So other than that, we checked in with the schools today and things went well for the opening and, except for the, you know, the traffic, as you heard.
That's inevitable, unfortunately.
Yeah, but anyway, that's about it.
So as far as, just, just so everyone's clear at home, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, Mrs. Way. Just so everyone's clear at home, Dr. Gifford, we're, we're continuing, even though we may not be publicly having full-out conversations about the high school.
Oh, yeah.
There are talks-
Absolutely.
At the high school level, with your office, with you, with Mr. Tebow-
Right.
About, you know, any-
Getting ready to go.
You know, when, when guidance does come out. And so everyone's aware, guidance has not come out.
Right.
Desi has not released any-
No.
Guidance on the high, on high school students.
Right.
Correct? Okay.
I was just going to follow up on that. We had a question from a parent asking about capacity issues. And we know that that was an issue at the middle school. And she, you know, had asked, what is the, are there capacity issues? It's the high schools and newer building, what were the concerns? I know that in some cases, from my experience of touring, looks like the science labs would be an area of concern. Do you have the same, you know, I just want to kind of respond to her, issues with capacity and fitting students at the high school, or how does that look?
Absolutely, but just as the middle school, we're making it work. They'll be moving kids around and, yeah. We were at a meeting, well, it was before last week, it was the week before, as I reported on. And I plan on stopping at the high school tomorrow to get a sense of where exactly, disregarding furniture right now, what you need, are your rooms, are you ready? Do you have a sense of where everyone's going? And I know they, I'm, I'm sure they're just about ready at this point.
Right.
So, awesome.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's not ideal, but.
Who was telling me today, your, your imperfections are perfect?
Or your, I'm bringing Kate into the conversation. We were talking today about a, a book or a saying and it's just, that's where we are, right? Our imperfections are perfect, like for the time being, or I'm saying it backwards, but you, you get what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying.
We're making it work.
We're making it work.
We're making it work. It seems as though, at least the students at DeMello are happy.
Right.
Next up, report of the chair. So I just have, actually, one of the things was already addressed. I just had guidance on Dartmouth High School. I'd also just had about bringing in, just reminding, a reminder to see if we can get the class, senior class officers in here at some point. As well as, I think it's important, you know, we had, there was an article in the Dartmouth Weekly recently regarding the, our diversity committee. So I had reached out to MASC, you know, for, for some guidance and getting that off the ground. And I believe it was Mr. Hardy over at Jim, Jim Hardy, MASC, that said that as the chair, I can go ahead and I can at least get a date on the books. That works for the two, I believe it's Shan, Dr. Jenkins and Mrs. Amaral. That's the two school committee members that were elected to the diversity committee. So obviously would be some dates that would work for the two of you. But I'd love to see, then we can go for the, we can go from there. And, you know, I, I would ask that the, the first meeting, the objective would be to, you know, nominate a chair of the committee and set, set some timelines and some, some goals. So do you have any preference, Dr. Jenkins?
So, Mr. Chair, I emailed the committee to ask just sort of generally if there were evenings during the week that someone was not available, like maybe they have another commitment, they have to watch their kids on a Tuesday night or something. And generally speaking, most of the committee members indicated that they were flexible. One of the committee members just asked, had a preference that the meetings not be on Monday nights. So.
Did they, I, I, I didn't, I hated with the mask.
Sorry, sorry about that. I emailed the committee and I asked if, when they were avail, if they had like a general night that they weren't available.
I missed the date.
Yeah. No dates, we didn't talk dates. I just want to know, are Mondays bad for you, are Tuesdays? Not everyone's going to be able to make every meeting.
Right.
One member said they would prefer not Mondays.
Yeah, okay.
So if we can avoid Mondays, that would be fine. I'm pretty flexible, so I'll defer to Ms. Amaral.
So it is the beginning of the month, is it possible that we can get a month on the books in April?
Do Tuesdays work for you?
I've been apologetic on a one-to-one basis responding to some of the anxious other community members and, and those that I've spoken to have been very gracious. Admittedly, it's like all bets are off for me. I mean, once my son gets off the bus, the side effect, as we all know, is I, I've not kind of opted to have some personal care assistance with him and my husband works. So I will, I will attempt to be flexible. I've had to step down from the Rotary Club and some other town councils to, to kind of adhere to like what I can actually handle. I don't want to say that I'm not available, but I will say that I will try to be flexible. So I would not go with my availability in terms of if I find that, if I find that I cannot commit, I will bring that back to the committee and, and potentially have somebody else take my place.
Sure.
But I don't want you to go by my schedule because I'm, I'm kind of full all over the place and, and stuck in the mud and kind of.
Sure, understood, Mrs. Amaral.
It's a cartoon, I don't know.
Thank you for your honesty. Thank you for your honesty and, you know, bring it back. If you, if you feel like you, you know, it's going to be tough, you could certainly look to select an alternate.
So can I recommend maybe Tuesday, the 20th of April? I would say the 27th, but we have a meeting, I think, on the 26th of the school committee. I would prefer not to do back-to-back meetings.
That is school vacation week.
Okay, so I, I don't think the 13th, I'm not, that's just not going to work for me. I'm just worried about next week. I'm, I'm off most of this week, so I'm not going to be ready for, and I'd like to be ready, get some stuff ready because I know that you're busy. So next week doesn't work and it's April vacation, so maybe Wednesday, the 28th? Either Wednesday, the 28th or May 4th would be my two recommendations.
You're going to have to post that with the town clerk.
We do. I confirm with MASC because it is a subcommittee appointed by the school committee. We need to post an agenda, we need to post meetings, we need to do all that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I will add, May 4th, Tuesdays would be, I think, be better for me if I were to actually.
All right, so can we set May 4th as our first meeting?
Does May work, May 4th work? All right. There's nothing on the calendar as far as any other school events, big school events? I'm not seeing anything. So we will set a date. Do you prefer a time, you want to wait until you get back?
Why don't we just say 6:30 right now? And, I mean, we don't have to post it yet, but why don't we put it May 4th, tentatively at 6:30? And we'll, we'll see. Do you need it to be a little later than that?
No, 6:30 has been.
We're going to do Zoom to start too anyways, so I think hopefully that should work. We'll get that worked out. And I can work with Kate to post the agenda and we can get that all set up.
Perfect. So just to confirm and for everyone watching at home, it's going to be Tuesday, May 4th at 6:30, tentatively 6:30. And you can look for the posting in the town clerk's office, you know, the week before, for our first meeting of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Thank you, everyone, for that.
Thank you, thank you, Shannon.
No problem.
Does anyone else have anything for, so I'll start down at that end of the table.
I just, just to circle back, you know, for future agenda, we'll bring in the parking conversation about the parking fees, is that?
Yes, we can, yes, I'd like to see that. I believe the next meeting is our reorganization, reorg of the committee. But I assume I'll be setting the agenda for that meeting. So if we can make that work, you know, I think it would be great if we could invite that, that student in. I don't know if it's possible or at least Zoom in.
That, that's going to be the joint meeting with the select board.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's the.
That's the joint with the select and the FinCon. So that's going to be the FinCon, which is going to be May 7th, May 17th.
To be blunt, right? They've already paid the parking fee for the year, we approve the budget. So if we have it April 26th or May 17th, it's six of one, half dozen the other, I think is a phrase Mr. Newns likes to use.
And I, and I believe that the gentleman who's head of, who's been like leading this committee is also the senior class president. So we'll kind of, if we bring in both, you know, at the same time, because we want to hear from those representatives, we can, you know, or we can separate it out, but, you know.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's right, the next meeting is on Zoom.
Right.
And it's before, so, no, thank you. Anything else?
Not for me, go on.
Mr. Newns?
Yeah, on a very serious matter, only because, as we heard tonight and I heard with the student rep and, and that type of deal, is it possible during our meetings to shut these air purifiers off?
Trouble too.
Because I can't.
I know, I, I'm not vaccinated yet. I don't feel comfortable with that, I'm sorry.
Are they only over here?
I was going to say, could they be moved, maybe one?
Because we can't.
Maybe move them a little bit? We'll have to defer to, there's one, there's one there and one over there.
One over there, you know.
I hope I'm vaccinated by our next meeting, but I don't feel comfortable being indoors with, with people unvaccinated without air circulation.
Let's move them, because not only do you have that, but you have the-
Yes.
The vents, yeah, above you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see why we couldn't at least move this one out of the way. That's right in earshot of you.
Get it out of your ears.
That was, I mean, seriously, those two.
Yeah, and then move that one to that side.
That one's pretty loud.
Yeah, I mean, because.
I agree.
I, I couldn't hear a lot of what he was saying, you know.
If you were to ask me, with all due respect, what he said tonight, I could not.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I caught a couple of pieces about like what was, used to be Mr. Dobbitt, I'm not sure what they're calling it now. But I heard that. Dobbitt's fine, but other than that, I heard nothing and no disrespect to the gentleman.
Sure.
You know, just in this, we'll be coming back to the high school. Is there any conversation around, I know we've been talking about the senior events, but is there an, is there any conversation around the junior banquet? Or is that something that's?
No, that's not, that's not.
Things are, as a matter of fact, we just had guidance that we really shouldn't even have a prom.
Okay, I was, I was just curious as we were.
Yeah, I haven't.
You can't, you can't, you can put, you can put, you can put 100 people indoors.
Right, it's not hard.
So.
That's what I figured, but I just, you know, this is what we're talking about.
We haven't had any conversation.
Yeah, it's just, it's tough, it's, it's tough. Yes, Mrs. Amaral.
Well, one quick thing, really excited for those kiddos in fifth grade who, who want to take up band. Thrilled to say that that's happening this week. I'm going to have a new trumpet player. She's not taking up trombone like her sister. And that starts this week after school. Really excited that they pulled it together. And then the other, only other thing that I have to, to remind anybody who is interested is that next Monday night via Zoom is our, it's a requirement of, of the state that we provide a parent's rights in special education once a year. And so that will be happening next Monday night, the 12th. And that, and folks can, we'll, we'll have an all-call or a text go out with the link to register. But, and it's a webinar format, so there'll be attendees and panelists. So that'll be, you know, to, to lessen the noise of, of a meeting. But that will be next week. And people can email dartmouthcpac@gmail.com or our Facebook page lists the event and folks can get the link to register. But like I said, there'll be an announcement coming out for that, we'll have the link right in a text. So I just wanted to remind folks of that, and that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaral. Dr. Jenkins?
So I just want to just ask for not now, I don't want to put anything on your plate now or even until school, but I think sometime in June. I have to say, I think the work that everyone is doing is great. But what I see here is not a reflection of what my family's experience has been. And I get emails from families all the time about how much their kids are struggling. And so it's great to bring in a lot of our kiddos who are doing fabulous. I don't want to bring in kiddos to have them. But I would like to have some recap, maybe in June, for us to talk about what our biggest struggles were. And because I really want to be laser-focused next year on how we try to bring these kids back and how we try to make them whole. I know my family, it has been, and this is no disservice to anything in the schools. This is about a pandemic. My kids have really struggled. And I've gotten a ton of emails, I know we all have, from families that are really struggling. And so I think sometimes, like, they don't see themselves in what we talk about sometimes in our, in our meetings. And so I think it would be useful to have a little bit of maybe a debrief session sometime in, in June, right? Maybe in the summer. Yeah, but I'd like to ask maybe your staff to start thinking about that. Like, what are the challenges that we saw? We gave our everything, but we weren't quite able to do this, and so now we need to think of that. I want our community to know that we are, I know you probably are already thinking about that, but I do want them to know that we're going to be laser-focused on that for the, for the next year. And I really want us to have some discussions about that moving forward, about what we're going to do to sort of help these kids who are struggling out. That would be great. So I just want to start thinking about it.
And maybe it's worthwhile to have a, a working session, you know, at some point over the summer with the committee after Dr. Gifford's had the opportunity to share this, you know, with, with her administration.
I mean, I just think that, I, I, and again, this is, this is about the pandemic and not the schools or the staff or anything they've done. It's been a struggle for a lot of, and, and I would also say, we can also talk about this related to our staff and our, and our, and our district. I think all of you who work here are burnt out. How do we fix that next year? What do we need to do for our staff to, to get them back to a better place? I think we need to have some serious conversations around that.
Agreed. I think having the kids back kind of rejuvenated people though.
Yeah, I think it does.
I agree.
And not only seeing the kids, but I think people don't understand, they just think, oh, yeah, you just, kids zoom in. That's not how it works. It's so much more work to have kids on Zoom, kids at home, it's a lot of work. And so it's good to have them all in, in part because you can focus on what's in front of you. You're not constantly thinking about what's out there. So it's good, but I think we've got, we're going to have a lot of work to do next year.
I agree.
And just, you know, to piggyback off of Dr. Jenkins, is there talk about some summer programs, additional summer programs, or just the?
Well, we do have the ESY coming.
The typical ones?
Yeah, the typical. And, but as you saw, we tried to, next to what, nobody wants anything to do with it.
But this is going to be another one where I'm sure the state is going to say in like mid-June or the end of May, you got to do this, this, and this, and this this summer, and good luck figuring it out. I'm sure that's what's going to happen. That's been the MO of the pandemic.
Go back to last summer, where somewhere around August 1st, they said by August 10th, we want three dissertations.
That's what they're going to say. In, in June 1st, we're going to say, June 10th, we want three plans for different types of summer schooling. And there's nothing we can do, but I suspect that's coming down the pipe.
Oh, yeah.
I do too.
They have nothing better to do up there. Don't get me started on that.
If you say virtual, we're, we're out. I don't want to hear that word again.
No virtual.
It's so, it's so tough for these kids.
Anything else?
Just Election Day tomorrow, Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, get out and, get out and vote in our town election.
They're voting from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
That's right. Excellent.
That's right, and with that, the next regular session meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is scheduled for Monday, April 26th, 2021. This will be a joint session, the joint session with the Select Board and Finance Committee was also moved to April 26th. Therefore, the committee's regular session will be scheduled for 5:30 PM via Zoom. Followed by the joint meeting. And that will also be the annual reorg of the school committee.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Newns, a second by Mrs. Way. On the motion, any other discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chris Gavel.
Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, sorry, I have the gavel, I don't know why I have the gavel.
This meeting is adjourned.